And welcome back. This is our first segment and we have been joined by none other than the mayor of Belize City, Mayor Darrell Bradley. Good morning.
Good morning.
We've also been joined by Carolyn Trent Sandford. She is the president of the Belize Association of Planners. And as well by Dr. Kareem Usher. He's a professor at Ohio State University. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. And welcome and thank you for being here. Of course, the Caribbean Urban Forum is taking place this week. You start on Wednesday. But today we get the opportunity to hear from you all the work that has gone into planning this event and what your specific objectives are. So let's, let's start off with how this partnership came about because it is a partnership.
Well, we're very excited about the Caribbean Urban Forum. This is the seventh conference. It's a regional conference which is organized by the Caribbean Network for Urban and Land Management. And one of the things that we're very excited about is really the municipalities partnership with the Caribbean Association of Planners. Even though this is the second, sorry, the seventh conference, it's the first time that a municipality is joining and co-hosting the conference with really the originators of the conference who are the planners within that country. And I think it's a good synergy because oftentimes when we make decisions as policymakers, we're not joined or we don't engage that much in terms of the technical and the research side. So I think that this is a synergy that can birth new things in Belize.
Absolutely. And from your perspective.
Definitely. And I think as the Belize Association of Planners like to say, we're about creating partnerships. And in today's world, you have to focus on the results that you want. What is the results that we want for Belize? What we want for Belize is to move towards a path of sustainability. What does that mean for urban areas? We continue to point out that our urban areas, they're urbanizing, population growth, people are moving in, so there's high levels of urbanization. We have several things happening at the same time. While the population is growing, you also have issues of climate change that are upon us, as well as we do have these urban development challenges like poverty, crime, housing deficiency, environmental pollution, and so on and so forth. So talking about pathways to urban sustainability, which is our team, is how we bring all the actors within the urban space together to discuss how is it that on one hand, we can address the issues of climate change, which as you know, becomes intense flooding, sea level rises, higher temperatures, and so on and so forth. But at the same time, address those issues which are challenging us: poverty, high crime and violence, lack of suitable housing, inefficient urban sprawl, and so on and so forth. So the partnership is very ideal because local government is often at the heart of addressing these issues real time, on the ground. And so when we create these partnerships, not only locally, but also regionally and globally, because our partners for a local organizing committee, the partnership is the Belize Association of Planners and the Belize City Council. But the Belize City Council also brings what we call the Regional Network of Local Governments, and the mayor will talk a little bit more about the mayor's forum. We also have linkages with UN Habitat, who speaks to their, the New Urban Agenda, how we reshape and reimagine our societies to address these issues that I have spoken about. We also have IDB, who has been working on Emerging Sustainable Cities Initiative, not only in Belize, but in the region. So it's how we bring all the players together, both globally, regionally, and locally, to start talking about what are these issues and what can be the path that we take to ensure that we build a Caribbean that is resilient, that is sustainable, but also a Caribbean that creates opportunities for prosperity.
Now, one of the things when we talk about urban planning, and I appreciate very well what you've, what you've pointed out in terms of how the planners are the ones to kind of see the landscape and know what can happen, what should be happening. And of course, the municipalities are the ones who would have to move towards making it happen.
Exactly.
So my question to you is, when you have a forum like this, or whenever you get together and you start to speak about urban planning with a specific objective, any kind of sustainable development, if you're talking about climate change, there's a lot moving forward, but there's also a lot of catch-up that has to be done. How do you prioritize where you will put your focus?
That's an interesting question, and I will, I will have the mayor respond with particularly because they've been doing quite a lot of work in terms of urban sustainability within the city. But it's, it's, it's an important point to highlight, Marlene, because as you have quite rightly pointed out, development is dynamic. It's in motion. People interacting in space and time. So while you're planning, like the plan, they often say to the planners, while you all the planning is happening. So how you do a three things, how you plan for the future, while at the same time addressing the issues that are today, and also addressing issues that have compounded over time. And I think this is how why planners focus sometimes, not only on where we go, but how we revitalize and how we use resources to address what are our issues for today, but within the concept that whatever I do today must feed into some long-term gain. So I'll have the mayor speak a little bit more about what they're doing. And then, of course, we have Dr. Usher, who's a professor of urban and regional planning. And so he may want to kick in from that.
Well, I just think the dynamic of this is that we're able to exist on multiple levels. I think one of the critical things I'm very keen about, and you would have seen, is the idea that we have been able to engage the public on many different areas of activity. We've talked about zoning a lot. We've talked about how do we address the issues of crime a lot. We've recently had our CMO symposium where we focused on fire preparation and mitigation. We're working, as Carolyn mentioned, with the Emerging and Sustainable Cities Initiative, where we're focusing a lot on revitalizing certain areas, sanitation, ensuring that people are community-minded and they work together to deal with certain strategies. But also, we speak about things like the master plan. And we speak about things like how do we build the city of 30 years into the future? And how do we work very closely with all levels of government and with stakeholders to ensure that we are achieving our development agenda? So that one of the exciting things about this conference is at the mayor's forum, you're going to hear conversations from mayors within Belize and also councillors, who are going to talk about the role of local government in achieving sustainable development and working towards the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals of 2030. But I think a critical part of it, and I think one of the reasons why we decided to co-host the conference was to ensure that there is an adequate level of public awareness. I think that one of the things we're learning as a municipality and working with the Belize Association of Planners is this idea of the dynamic aspect of planning, but also that planning has to be people-centered. And it has to ensure that you have a massive amount of engagement. It's not to say that people direct all the processes, because you do have elected officials, you have a technical component of it, which has to be safeguarded. But it has to have, it has to have a people-centered focus. And I think when we did several of the projects in Belize City, we failed to adequately realize that. And working with the Inter-American Development Bank and even working with Carolyn's organization, we're kind of recognizing that that has to be the way we move forward.
And that's worthwhile elaborating on in just a bit, but I want to bring in Dr. Usher, obviously, to put the regional perspective on it. Because we really are only focused on especially Belize City and the work that is taking place here. But how different is our situation from what you're seeing in the rest of the region?
Well, interestingly enough, although I do most of my work, I'm stationed in the United States, North America. As we know, everything is linked, right? So what occurs there occurs in the Caribbean region, and therefore, it's a point for us to have that connection. And through Ohio State University, it allows us to some of the resources and leverage to do that. Back to some of what the panel has mentioned is that planning is really sort of the community's decision-making approach to solving its problems. So identifying those problems and then going after it in a responsible way, right? So we're not just chart-picking issues. We're looking at it holistically and able to say, okay, this is how we're going to address this. As the mayor mentioned, it's also important to have community engagement or public participation, right? There's an entire set of literature and work being done on that. So I think the area that I would like to, that I see myself, my role fitting in here is bringing out scientific approach to addressing our issues, not just in Belize City, but within the Caribbean region. Because although some of the issues are same, they're kind of local, specific. I spoke to a colleague from Guyana just before I came up here, and he is asking me how, how is it that Belize was able to move their capital inland? Because they're now having that issue. They're having issues with erosion on the coast. Should they build a seawall? How high? You know, what are the issues there? So it's, you know, it's similar, and they're asking, looking to other areas, you know, for that support.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
And that's just what these forums do. We share ideas, because the challenges that we share, there's some commonalities. And oftentimes, you'll find some of the solutions are already out there. So it's how you look at it and how you look at your scenario and see how is it that you can apply it, sometimes even tailor it, you know, to suit, to suit your.
That's a great segue, I think, to go back to the issue that you were touching on. Because obviously, I wasn't around for Hattie, but I could imagine it wasn't a very difficult sell to talk about moving the capital into Belmonte because of what the city, the coast had just experienced. Now, being able to plan when people are already residing within an urban area means that you are continuously working along with people to be able to almost guide them as to what would be better for their own surroundings. But the cultural context is so important. Let's, let's give an example. Can we really tell Belizeans that you cannot have your own personal grocery store two doors down? I mean, will we ever be able to reach that point, that there will be no objection to changing something like that? And how do you work with those specific dynamics when this is something that people have become accustomed to?
One of the things that I wanted to contribute, and it's very interesting, but planning is diverse. And a sustainable city is very varied. You have New York, you have the examples in the United States. You also have cities like Benki and Cayo, which Carolyn and I were discussing this issue, and she shared some statistic that Cayo experiences a 95%.
97%.
97% satisfaction rate. The people who live within that community are satisfied about that space. I don't know, and I wouldn't hazard a guess in relation to satisfaction, living in Belize City, because we do have challenges here. But what I'm saying is that we tend to think, okay, planning looks this way. Planning is a high-rise, planning is a million-dollar home, planning is a state-of-the-art park. But it means different things to different communities. I engage with many members of the downtown community, for example. And I remember one of the opening eye moments was, we were talking about the bond and we were engaging with people in the downtown, and people just said, we want garbage cans in the downtown area. So that we tend to live on these very aloof kind of platforms, but people in the community know what they want, they know what they need. And so I think a big aspect of this is that we're in tune as policymakers and elected officials, and that we can liaise with there and work closely with the technical experts to ensure that we are able to address problems on the ground. Because you can have sustainable cities which are very small, which are, look very different. And one of the things which I think COFF offers an international perspective, I've gone to a lot of conferences, and we won't be in New York, we won't be at Paris, but there is a great degree of sustainable development and high-quality living that Belize can offer if we get the correct planning in place.
And I like to go to Libor's shop too. Because then they will go buy a lease out as well. But to just add a bit, if I may, Sandy, I want to add to the point that the mayor made and said, what we, what we attempt to create, working with communities, are diverse, robust, healthy communities. And it reflects those communities' culture, tradition, and values. So you may have some communities, for example, and you can see it in Belize City, where they are not prepared to accept a mechanic or a grocery store beside them because they want the quiet. And then you have some other areas where they want, when they open, they do the morning, the neighbor, they're right there for say good morning, and they start a chat. So it is how you create the varying communities, and this is why, as Dr. Usher mentioned, it goes back to the communities. What are their issues? What are their problems? And sometimes, there are simple issues that you need to resolve. And the mayor mentioned downtown, they wanted the garbage. Some people, it might be the drainage. Some people might be lights on the street. And that is what creates the community that you want. Now, technically, we may come in and add certain things to it. For example, when you're moving towards smart communities now, you're starting to talk a little bit more about sustainable buildings, energy efficiency, and so on. So we want to then add their challenges and their issues, and bring in the technical side and to see how we can create these kinds of communities that people are happy. And that's all you want, you know, people to be happy in their communities.
What I'm getting out of this is a significant emphasis on going green. And the idea of an overall sustainability for the environment itself and the way we plan within those spaces.
No, I just wanted to go back to quickly what the mayor mentioned. We might be in New York or Paris today. So, you know, in terms of planning history, so a lot of these major cities were not what we perceive them today. And so I think when I look at Belize and the rest of the Caribbean, we are right in line, but we have a better position because we can actually learn from what they did. So we always talk about Belize and the Belize City and the canals, and you know, when I saw that is, it was even worse in Paris and New York and, you know, and London, right? They didn't have canals, so they throw it right out in the street. So Belize City is, we're not that badly off, and actually, we're in a position to be better because we can learn from what, what they're doing.
And in going back to the going green aspect of it, this is, I mean, we, I always get worried when we start to hear these buzzwords a lot, because they lose a lot of meaning, you know? And, you know, I feel that the more that we talk about going green, the less people are beginning to really understand what it means. And we talk about a safe environment, being sustainable. And while we have a lot of practices in Belize that we see as antiquated, but actually are now more modern, if you're talking about using a VAT system or building a house on stilts. How do we, because we have visions of a modern society. So how do you balance them out, being as sustainable as possible, but also having a more futuristic vision of what the city can be?
Yeah, but I think it goes back to this, like cities, I think the important aspect is that they're adaptable, that communities are resilient, but within the context of that, cities will look different. You can have an adaptable, resilient Belize City with houses on stilts. You can have the colonial heritage of Belize City maintained in the downtown, and the city be adaptable and resilient. When you talk about modern, modern doesn't necessarily mean new or high-rise or so forth. And I think in terms of Belize, I mean, I've lived in many parts of the world, I've traveled a lot. But when you come home, there's a certain kind of value and quality of life that Belize offers, which is very dynamic. Again, Carolyn and I, we were speaking about this, there is a certain, there's a certain benefit to that. And the idea is how do you, through planning efforts and through working with different partners, how do you accentuate that so that those values and those quality of life really ring out? And one of the things I was looking at in preparation for some of the presentations in the conferences, that when we talk about the Sustainable Development Goals, yes, these goals may be lofty, but there are specific indicators that we want to look at to ensure that we have within our community. So that when we talk about poverty reduction, when we talk about crime and sustainability, when we talk about climate change, are we really achieving certain baseline targets? And if we are achieving those targets, no matter what the city looks like, people will be happy. They'll have opportunity, they will have meaningful engagement, there'll be jobs, there will be resilient society, and that's what we want to move towards.
Well, to add on to that is, I guess, two first steps, I think, we might need to ask ourselves, right? So it's, who are we as a community, right? Who's, what is Belize City? Who do we want to be? Who do we think we are? And what do we want to be in the future? And also, there's an educational component. So in terms of, you know, people wanting their shop two doors down, we might have to spend a lot of resources in terms of educating the public, educating our community, ourselves, what this means, right? If this is what you want, what it means to get there? And also, who are we, right? Do we want the type of development that we see in other places around the world? We want a type of development that supports who we are, you know, in terms of our vision and identity? So that's two components we should ask ourselves.
And you, you, you mentioned that the concept, Marlene, of a lot of what we traditionally do is already green. And yes, they are buzzwords, and I think it is making that connection, you know, to ensure that at the end of the day, when we say green, it doesn't necessarily mean something new. It's like what you said, I talk with people and they talk about harvesting water. When the VAT, we used to that, that bad. That's what they mean by harvesting water. You know, and when we talk about more green spaces, Dr. Usher is presenting a paper on spatial, the use of space to connect families. And when we say we want more green spaces, it simply means we want more green trees, more parks, more playgrounds, where families and children can, can come out. So it is, it is maybe something, all right, green, what is green? But then when we start linking it, and that comes back to the educational component. And when we talk modern, sometimes it is not necessarily modern, as well as it may be progressive. Because progressive simply means now that we may look at it and say, hey, in order to achieve these particular things, this is the path that we must take. If we want to reduce crime, for example, and violence, then we need to create better living conditions for people, we need to create better play areas for children, we need to create better accessibility to education and healthcare and all of these things. And that's what planners do. We look at this, we look at the scenario and we said, as Dr. Usher said, these are the problems, these are the challenges. But you also have to recognize, if there's a supermarket that goes up in my, in my, in my community, that has three floors and so many square feet, that brings trucks into my community, that brings people standing up at the corner drinking beer, that brings a lot of things with it. But maybe a little corner shop that I just go and put my hand through, they, they say, no, bring all of that. But then I might want that because some people live a certain life. You have people who may earn money every week or maybe every day, so they want that place that they can go every evening to buy their punga rice off punga floor. You know, and, and that is how you create your communities, and at the end of the day, it's for them to be happy. And I think that's what planners want to do, create successful communities that people feel good about, feel pride in, and feel a sense of cohesiveness and kinship among each other.
So Belizean people say the gold standard is a shop every two houses down, and that's what we aim toward?
If you're, if you, it all depends if you're happy. But what we do as technical people now, we would say at the end of the day, if you're going to develop an area with a shop, these are the standards by which you, you ought to have. You must have a parking bay where your vehicle could come in and park to deliver, you know? And you start looking at these things, you start talking to people about the fact that, okay, if you have a shop, issues of legal license, no cell, no beer cell, and if you apply those kinds of standards, you can have a lovely community. Because communities now must be diverse and robust, and, and you want to be, be able to come out sometimes on your veranda. If you remember growing up, any of you, you used to go on a veranda, you come out, you sit down, now TV, take it all away. But how do you create a community where they're not just, you come home and go inside, but rather the community works together, access towards and guardians of their own destiny? I mean, that is what you want.
I think Carolyn is touching on the concept of social capital and building community efficacy, right? So how, how do we empower communities to, to access the resources available to them and bring that to bear on their issues, right? So I think, and that's very critical, it takes, it takes sort of a top-down, bottom-up approach. So people have to be able to mobilize, and we can facilitate that, but we also bring that technical component that.
So I was about to ask then, in that case, while the entire initiative and the concept of it is forward-thinking, what is the buy-in from the average person in terms of being able to share these ideas with them? How, how do we as individuals buy into these concepts enough to materialize it?
But I think a big part of it is the awareness. You will naturally buy into it because you want to live in a society that is sustainable. You want to live in a society that offers you and your family the highest standard of living. I think that when I was listening to the conversation just a while ago, it goes back to the issue of government and governance. We want to ensure that at the end of the day, all sectors of our society, including those who have charge of public responsibilities, deliver the building blocks of a sustainable, resilient communities. It's easy for a, to sell this idea, because everybody wants, I mean, I think about my family, I think about my son and my daughter. Everybody wants to live in a sustainable community. It's how do we raise that awareness? How do we engage the average person into a conversation about planning? And I think this is a major focus, one of the reasons why the municipality wanted to partner in this conference. Yes, it costs us money, and it's a lot of energy, and it's a lot of time and so forth. But we want to raise awareness that it's about you, it's about the city that we want to build together. And they, I remember Carolyn likewise was talking about a, something I heard you say that perhaps maybe 50 years, we won't have Belize City. Because we talk about, we talk about climate change, we talk about crime, we talk about population growth, we talk about the growth of Ladyville and Belmonte, and people migrating to the United States. So that we're actually fighting for issues of survival. We're fighting to build that city that we want. And if you sit down with the average person and you explain this conversation, this is a conversation that every single Belizean and resident of Belize City should be integrally involved in. And I think oftentimes, Marlene, you've challenged me on this, sometimes we make decisions in this country and we make it in the office, whereas we should make it on the street and in community meetings, so that we are directing the development of the country in a very inclusive and engaging way. Because everybody is part of that or should be part of that Belize that we want to build.
And only if you're a part of it, will you actually participate, you know?
It has to be ownership and buying.
And the way to do that, I think, one way to do that is the very essential question, right? Is one, sort of these public meetings go to communities, right? Go to communities, provide dinner, provide food or something for them to eat, and engage the community. Another component is when we do projects such as the one I had my students work on this semester, is what is some upfront gains? One of the upfront gains we worked on was a park, you know, sort of a park system. And I think part of it is to be able to provide that tangible product that would instill civic pride, that will, that would have residents be able to say, okay, this is in my community. And then that whole ownership, so there has to be, you talk about the buy-in, that sort of upfront, sort of the product that they can see and touch.
Well, thank you all for allowing us to have our own mini COFF right here. Because we won't be able to sit in for the three days, but we have to get into the details of the forum itself, who can attend and what they can expect, right?
Excellent. Well, I want to start is perhaps with some of the highlights.
Yes.
Then I'm going to ask the mayor to do a quick capture of the mayor's forum. I'll talk a little about the Urban Forum, and Kareem can maybe capture a little bit about the presentations. We have something like 45-plus presentation of papers. These are all papers from global, regional, and local participants, addressing the thematic areas of pathways to urban sustainability, green energy, space, and economy. We also have a welcome and cultural night that will take place. There's going to be an Urban Expo featuring the Emerging Sustainable Cities Initiative. We have the mayor's forum, I have the mayor talk about that. And we also have three experimental tours, where participants will be taken around Belize City to look at metro Belize City, the downtown, sustainable project, and also Belize City as a water city. So I'm going to ask the mayor if he can quickly capture the mayor's forum, and then ask Kareem to capture the presentations.
Well, one of the things when we sat down to discuss the structure of the conference, we wanted to ensure that it's not just a conference that happens in Radisson, so that there are opportunities for people in the public to be engaged. And the idea with the mayor's forum is to take advantage of the fact that we will be having 30 regional mayors and councillors who will be attending this conference and who can give their perspective on how do you build a resilient community being led by community leaders. And so the idea with the mayor's forum is that this will be Thursday at 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Bliss Institute. It's a public event, it's free. And any person, we're targeting a lot of people in the NGO communities, or just the average person in Belize. We're also engaging a lot of students to attend the forum, and they can just come. And it will be a presentation and discussion in a talk show kind of format, where we will have a discussion. We'll have a discussion on the role of local government in achieving sustainable development and achieving the Sustainable Development Goals. The other thing I really just wanted to highlight again is the Urban Expo. And the Urban Expo likewise will be Thursday, and that's going to be from 8:00 to 4:00 in the evening. That's going to be at Memorial Park. And the idea with the Urban Expo is that we're doing a lot of studies, as Carolyn mentioned, working with the Emerging and Sustainable Cities Initiative of the Inter-American Development Bank. And we want to present some of the findings of these studies to really give an option to members of the public, to show that it can be business as usual, or we can choose a pathway to sustainability, and you can actually vote on the outcomes that you want. So it's going to have about 30 different booths, we're going to have a lot of visuals. We're going to have a lot of visuals, a lot of presentations, and so forth. And we want to engage with members of the public about some of the good work that's going on in terms of these planning and research opportunities.
So that's the interactive day, Thursday during the date at Memorial Park, and Thursday night at the Bliss.
At the Bliss Institute.
Okay.
So the, as Carolyn pointed out, it's a wide array of presenters as, as far as the continent of Africa, North America, the Caribbean region. And the, the theme of the conference is broad enough to be able to capture just a wealth of papers. So we have papers dealing with algae as fuel source to affordable housing, which is sort of generally planner-related, but also medicinal plants, and how that could be used in ecotourism, and educational component for young people within communities. So it, it's broad, it's very exciting for someone like me who love to learn, that's just great.
All right. Well, it sounds like you guys have quite a few interesting days ahead. We wish you the best of luck, and we appreciate you coming in to give us just a snippet of what will be your conversations for the next three days.
Thank you very much. And may I just add that if anyone wishes to register for the conference, they can go to www.belizeplanners.org, and there is a icon that you click on that says, register. The conference is open. Yes, there is a fee to the conference, but we do do walk-ins. So all you need to do is to come by, and we'll enable the walk-ins to come in, okay?
Thank you once again.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and take a break, and when we come back, we're going to be joined by representatives of the US Embassy talking about a funding opportunity that you can take advantage of, so stay tuned.